Three hours ago.
Hey, Denny.
Yeah.
I'm with you on that one.
Oh, when do you think that'll hit with you?
I guess it's already did.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
I graduated from physical therapy in the hopes that I'd see the doctor next week.
She's come this way, this far so fast.
That time of the year.
Yeah.
Seems like, right, when you wrap it up, it starts over again.
It's water. They're not sure about me going to a public pool.
I'm not funny.
Oh, there.
No, that's messages.
The weather's good.
Well, I know I've gone this week.
But you just keep that in mind.
Okay.
This phone drives me absolutely insane.
Well, I don't know what the thing is matter, but as I left the house at six thirty tonight.
Can't find my messages. We still didn't have our.
And it's talking about.
Really?
Yeah.
Does he ever come in?
Wow.
So I was just talking to.
That'd be a lot of time.
I'll tell your jokes, guys. And he said they're going to be me going to settlement check. The post office from State Motors. And I see.
Oh, and just on, there's like four pages with the tax abatements.
A week from Wednesday.
It's crazy.
Yeah, but that's quick. It was pretty quick.
Only four?
Yeah.
Well, just on the page and up, yeah, and then all the CF1.
I'm in the SPS.
UPS.
Got to stand up.
Good evening, all. Call this common council meeting to order. We'll start with the implication by Jack. Thank you, Jack.
Father God, as we gather together tonight, we thank you for the many blessings that this community has, the natural resources, the economic growth. We thank you. We take a moment to acknowledge and congratulate the 600-plus graduates of Warsaw Community High School. We pray, Lord, that you would be with them as they go off into their careers. Thank you for the many employees who work hard to serve this community. Bless our work tonight as we discuss the business of Warsaw. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jack. Now for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, every council member is present. Legal is absent. And before Mike Clandere says, Jeff, you forgot the minutes. You see the minutes from the nineteenth of May, seeking approval for those.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Josh. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second by Jerry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I want to welcome everybody that's here tonight. There are no reports oral or written. There is no unfinished business. And that will take us to our three items of new business. And it looks like Jeremy, thanks Jeremy for sticking around, has a few items here. That's the first one here, the tax abatements. What are we looking at here, Jeremy?
Well, it's that time of year again.
Yeah.
It's like you got a lot of tax abatements. In the past, we kind of just went through all of them, and then you can vote on them. If that's your pleasure, we'll do that again. If not, we can do them individually. I'll leave that up to you.
Any objections? Is that good?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, so the first one is Instrumental Machine and Development, twenty ninety-eight pound drive, tax abatements for real and personal property. It was granted in two thousand nineteen. So they are in the fifth year of their abatement. They spent roughly three point two million in real property and improvements, and have spent around one point three million in personal property. I would recommend, and all of these have my recommendations on them. I'd recommend that we not approve any of them, so I do recommend to approve them as well. Little Crow Loss LLC, this is a affordable housing project. So as part of our commitment to those IHCDA funds, we give a tax abatement. And with that tax abatement, they get a certain amount of points scored. They're in their eighth year, and they've obviously made the investment in the building itself. Another affordable housing, eight oh two Center Street, Senior Housing Project, spent roughly thirteen point seven million on that project, seventy-two unit senior housing. It's in its fourth year. Flex Loss has a few tax abatements over the years, so I've kind of tallied them. And you can see at the bottom, from two thousand eleven to two thousand seventeen, the total number of employees. So their two thousand eleven tax abatement, they spent roughly six hundred fifty thousand since filing, and have added around one hundred eighteen employees. That's in their tenth year. Twenty thirteen tax abatement has added about forty new employees since that abatement. That's also in their tenth year. Two thousand seventeen, they approved for real personal property tax abatements for an expansion on Center Street and Lighter Drive. That is in their seventh year. They've added a significant amount of employees over the years, roughly one hundred and three employees since their first tax abatement in two thousand eleven.
Jeremy, are all these tenth years, this is their last?
It may be. It depends on when they purchase the equipment, because the equipment schedule could be over a three or four, three or five-year period. So depending on when that equipment gets placed into service, it could be, so sometime, when it's a ten-year, it could be fifteen years, because they might have bought equipment over the years, which is why you see that difference in the dates. AJM, Lake City Highway, real property. This is for refurbish of an existing building, one point six million, hired thirty-six employees. That is in their third year of abatement. Polk Drive, fourteen forty-five, this is the Patrick Industry, and there's two Patrick Industry, actually, there's three of them. Two of them would be the real property, and one would be personal property tax abatement. So the personal property tax abatement is the equipment that was bought by the company itself and put into service, which was roughly three point two million in equipment. They've hired a hundred ninety-nine employees since opening up at that location. That's in the seventh year. There were two phases to the Patrick Industry. So the first phase was sixty thousand dollar shell building, roughly four point four million. And then the second phase was the, an additional sixty-four thousand, roughly four point nine million. One is in its seventh year, or no, one's in its tenth year, and the other one is in its sixth year of abatement. Twelve ninety-five, that's Banner Medical's building. They filed for a real property tax abatement when that was built, five point one million in real property, and is the ninth year of that abatement. Met Artist, eleven ninety-five Polk Drive, it's fifty-five thousand square foot, roughly eight million dollars. This was the second shell building we built, and it's in the sixth year of its abatement. Thirteen ninety-five Polk Drive is the third shell building that we built, roughly eleven point three million, and is occupied, occupied, a portion of it's occupied by Mentor Media, and it is in its second year of abatement. Texmo Precision Casting, this was a tax abatement that was issued by the county in two thousand sixteen when we annexed that property. In two thousand nineteen, we took over that abatement. They've spent roughly two point eight in real, two point four in personal property, and have added fifty-two employees since two thousand and sixteen. Buffalo Street, the Wildman Group, this is, was a ten-year for personal property in two thousand fourteen. They spent roughly two point one million in personal property, and they're in the tenth year of that abatement. In two thousand twenty, they applied for another real and personal property tax abatements. So both of those are in your packets. They're in the third year of their abatement on that, and have hired an additional forty-five employees since two thousand twenty-two. Zimmer Inc. was granted, granted a tax abatement, a ten-year tax abatement for personal property. They spent roughly, or they expected to spend roughly twenty-eight million. To date, they've spent twenty-nine point nine million, and is in the third year of their abatement. BioMet Inc. and Subsidiaries, this was also a tax abatement that was granted in the county in two thousand fourteen, twenty-eight million in new personal property. That was expected. They roughly spent sixteen million in new property, and it's in the eighth year. They only get abated for what they purchase, so if they purchase sixteen million, that's what gets baited. They don't get abated for for anything more than what they purchased. Fifty-six East Bell Drive, BioMet, two thousand twenty-two, they applied for another tax abatement. They were adding new R and D and logistic equipment, and have spent around seven million in new equipment to date, and that is in their second year of their abatement. BTC Investments was a real property tax abatement for an expansion at one thirty-three Enterprise Drive. The expansion was twelve thousand square feet. Project value was around five hundred twenty-five thousand. It did not have any jobs attached to that investment. It was just a real property expansion, and they're in their fifth year. Arnault Property, twenty-five twenty-five, this is the most recent affordable housing project we've done, roughly eight point seven million in construction costs, sixty family units, affordable family units were added to our affordable housing units, and this is the second year of that abatement. Danco Medical was granted a tax abatement in real and personal property two years ago. They spent six hundred thirty thousand on real improvements and three point two million in new manufacturing equipment. They expect to create twenty new jobs over the next few years. They are in their second year of that abatement.
Any questions?
I just have one other question.
Mm-hmm.
When they apply for a certain amount in abatement, and then they go over that in what they spend, do we abate all of it up to what they spend?
It depends on what the abatement request was for. I try to tell them to aim high. That way, they get the full abatement. Sometimes, we can limit the amount of the abatement. So when we approved the SB one, if it was limited to twenty-eight million.
Right.
And they spent twenty-nine, then they would only be eligible for the twenty-eight.
I noticed that they spent more.
Yeah.
But since we didn't.
Typically, it's limited to the amount that they apply on the tax abatement.
Okay, all right.
That's why I tell them to overestimate a little bit. That way, you have that buffer.
Yeah. But we all know how that's gone recently.
Don't listen to me, but I was on my calculator again, and not including jobs, just over one hundred and twenty-four million in private sector investment. So. Any questions for Jeremy? Any other comments, Jeremy?
No, I think we have a few others that didn't make it into this packet, so hopefully I'll get those in front of you. But I think it's only like three. I tried to wait and collect as many of them as I can, so we're not doing this every meeting. But there's still a few more that we'll present probably at the next meeting.
Also, a huge amount of credit goes to Jeremy. There's lots of stakeholders here, but his work, it's amazing, entering my second year, what I'm able to see at times when I'm with him, is how he deals with the private sector and to encourage economic development. So thanks, Jeremy, for all your work. Lot of people, but again, it's a privilege to sit by him and be at several of these meetings.
Just to piggyback, I agree. I just figured in my head, a hundred and twenty million, and that's in ten years. That'll all be on the tax rolls, collecting full taxes, correct?
Yes.
So that, that to me is just amazing.
Yeah, and the reality is, it's a step down, so.
Yeah.
By year five or six, most of it's.
Yeah.
Right.
On the tax rolls, yeah.
So it doesn't take the full ten years.
No.
But at the end of ten years, that they're fully on the tax.
It's front-loaded, pretty heavy, but by the fifth or sixth year, you're paying fifty percent, and by, you're down to like ten and twenty percent by the end, so it's not. But the amount of money that they've invested is certainly worth that type of help from us.
Amazing amount of money. Thank you.
And then you think about the jobs in the area.
Yes.
Many people living in our jurisdiction, Warsaw schools, the graduates, it's the ripple effect. It's incredible, and a good, good thing. So any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to accept all as presented.
Motion to accept.
Thanks, Jurgen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any further discussion? I'll call a question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. Thanks again, Jeremy. Jeremy, we're looking at another item that you have on the agenda here.
We are. So I am requesting approval for a transfer of funds within the Northern Residential Tiff to cover the financing costs for the RIF loan, RIF bond we recently closed on. That project's for Bel Augusta to create more single-family homes. And I'm requesting to transfer fifty thousand into professional services from improvements other than building.
I would make a motion to accept that.
Motion to accept by Mike. It's Resolution twenty twenty-five zero six zero one. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second by Jack. Any further discussion or questions? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Jeremy, thank you very much.
Just, some of you were there not too long ago, but today was the final approval for the Street Department facility bond. We expect to go to sell with that bond around June twelfth. That's our goal, and then hopefully close around June twenty-sixth. And then hopefully after that, they'll finish the design and start construction. It has a.
And you maintained our RIF.
Yes, we did.
We retained our double A minus rating, and I think the project has a substantial completion by July of two thousand twenty-seven. So it'll be a couple of years, but looking forward to getting that project off the ground.
Last fall, was sitting down early on to move forward with it. First thing, thanks to you, the council. Thank you, Jack and Mike, on redevelopment for your countless meetings as well, private and public. But the amount of traffic to put something like this together that comes up on my computer screen, that I didn't know when I was on this side and the other, it is amazing. And Lynn would say, and Jeremy would say, our attorneys, it's all part of the work that we do, but it's a privilege to sort of watch it and see them do all the work. I just sort of, I sit up there in the corner and just see all the stuff that's happening, and it's amazing. And again, Jeremy, those first several meetings, I can remember you were in on them, and it's neat to be where we are today. Thank you.
So final guaranteed price was thirteen million, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand and twenty dollars and some thirty-three cents, I think. So we came in pretty close to that mark we were trying to hit. And we'll, you'll get the final bond financing numbers once we do that. But, so really feel good about where we came in with the project.
Yeah. Remember, we were advised to go to fourteen and a half to protect us, but it was, it was the twelve, thirteen million range, and good mark. And Jeremy was in on that meeting as well with Robinson Construction, and it's going to be incredible what they're going to be able to do.
Yeah, it's going to be an incredible facility for the Street Department, make them more efficient and over the next thirty years, for sure.
Thanks again, Jeremy. Next item, Denny, ordinance twenty twenty-five zero six oh one, police salary ordinance amendment. What are we looking at here?
Okay, so with some of the changes that have been happening, or going to be happening with parking control and things of that nature, we have an employee that's going to be retiring July first, so we decided it was time to kind of combine three different roles into one, and we've come up with the job description for a community compliance officer. That person, or those people, will be tasked with code enforcement, animal control, and parking.
Parking.
So as we streamline that, that parking situation, it kind of makes sense for us to get this position going. And I've worked with Chief Whitaker down at the Police Department, and we worked on the, the job description that you guys have attached there. And we asked you to approve this, and we'll add it to the salary ordinance, and we can start recruiting right away for the replacement for that individual that's retiring.
Appreciate your patience. I've talked to several of you about this now for, oh boy, the past, what, six, eight months. Parking, we're wanting to ramp that up, just the enforcement and the administration of it. If this new technology, and you guys continue to decide to walk and look that direction, having two on this job throughout the entire city will be very helpful. And then also, the Police Department wanting to have a civilian, help me, Denny, with animal control, rather than an officer, have highly-trained civilians that can help us with animal control. And then now you add code enforcement on it. I just think having two individuals doing those three things, Denny laid it out really well, appreciate the memo, on why, again, we want to do it. And a lot of it's efficiency. It's very costly, but there could be, you could say, cost savings by doing it, just a better way to serve the community in those three areas. I say that okay, Denny?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, right now, we kind of show those responsibilities across the city, so having one, one person or one group of people to go to for all those issues is going to streamline it and get faster service out to the residents when they need help.
Any questions for Denny?
So will there actually be two people?
There will be, there will be two people doing the same position, and then they will be reporting to Captain Joel Bean with the Police Department. So they'll be overseeing the program.
It may take some time with a retirement and then training these individuals to do that, but just big picture, the, we felt like this would be a good thing to do. Any other questions or comments, concerns? This is an amendment to the salary ordinance, so it will require two readings. Denny, do you have any comments on that timing?
Yeah, again, we have someone retiring July first, so the quicker I can get this implemented, the quicker I can start recruiting for that replacement. We'd like to have them hired soon. That way, we can get them trained and sped up, get them up to speed for taking over for that retiree when that happens. So if you could help me with that, that would be very grateful for that.
I'm wanting to make sure that the council is very comfortable with this. At times, you've decided to, to take action, not an emergency, but it would help, okay?
Yeah.
Our next meeting, Lynn, help me out, it would be on the sixteenth.
Yes, sir.
Of June. So that still would give us a couple of weeks if you would be more comfortable with just one reading. It's up to you as a council. Denny, thanks for your work on this. I appreciate it. I know there's been a lot of meetings with a lot of different stakeholders internally, and appreciate you putting all this together.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
How does the maximum hourly wage compare to what they're being compensated?
Well, what we use was, the code enforcement was the highest hourly wage currently, and animal control was an extra stipend on top. So what we did, we used the, the code enforcement wage as the, the top amount, the maximum. The retiree that's getting ready to retire, they, they are at the maximum. The ones coming in, and the other gentleman that we have will not be at maximum for a couple, three years yet, but once they get up to speed, then they'll hit that maximum. But we kept it at the higher end of where code enforcement is right now.
Yeah, the figure that you have there just is how high it can.
That's, yes, that's the maximum.
Maximum.
Can you tell me, you and I have talked about this.
Yes.
How many code enforcement visits are made on a, a regular basis? And if you want to say a daily, or a weekly, or a monthly, or?
I do not know the exact number, but it all depends on time of year and what the citizens are seeing, because they typically were very reactive right now. And when they, when somebody calls in, that's when we're going to inspect, but now we'll be able to be a little bit more proactive. But I would say they, they do several throughout the week. With it, with them going to parking and animal control, it's going to fill their day for sure.
Well, and therein lies my, not fear, but my, do you know the answer to that question, Jeremy? Do you have any idea how many code enforcement runs they make, or?
It's every day.
Yeah. So that's, that's enough for me. So I've expressed to Denny in our private conversations that I have some reservations about taking code enforcement out of building and plan. And, you know, we're going to be bringing on, what, seven hundred and fifty new homes coming online in the next couple of years. We're growing. And I've expressed to Denny that I don't know how the job can be done effectively and efficiently to keep things moving. If we're going to be building that many houses, refurbishing that many buildings, new buildings, seems to me like two people trying to fill three positions is not ideal.
Well, that, that kind of, the, the growth that we're having is what's kind of creating this.
Yeah.
As we grow with seven hundred and fifty more houses, we're going to need probably another compliance officer. We're going to need more trash guys. We're going to need more police, fire, all of those things. As we grow with seven hundred and fifty more residential units getting ready to get online, the city's going to grow, and we're going to have to recruit for all of our positions, so.
Yes, and to be pulling code enforcement out from building and plan where they, most of the code enforcement comes from, they're making, I know I put in a fence this winter, code enforcement had to come out and make sure that the posts were set correctly.
You have different, you have different categories. You have the building side, which is not going to be covered out of the code side.
Uh-huh.
You have the code side. But you make a good point, and I think that's what Denny's trying to do here. And it's not going to be perfect out of the gate. It's not going to be perfect out of the gate because. We didn't arrive at this point because we didn't make mistakes, right? We've made mistakes trying to figure out what the best solution is. And so where they're at now is what they're trying to do, is get to that best solution. We know that the animal enforcement issues with trying to co-mingle with police officers wasn't working out. A police officer wants to be a police officer, they don't want to be an animal control person. So we're trying to evolve that. That's what he's trying to do, is evolve that position. I can't say that two is going to be enough. We won't know. We know that we need two, because one didn't work. It didn't work. We knew that. That's why we're here. We need two, for sure. I think there's going to have to be, and Joel will have to figure that out, because it's going to have to be kind of a coordinated thing. Like, there's going to be times when the parking person has to be, has to have a routine cycle, and he's not going to be able to take a code complaint or go deal with an animal. So that will have to be fleshed out in the management of those people's times. But the more we get involved in it, the more we see, that's when he's going to have to come back, and Joel will have to come back and say what's working, what's not working. So I definitely think this is going to be an evolving type thing. So to your point, I think you make a good point. I think right now, we're, we're looking at two. Does two turn into three? It might. It just depends on how it's organized and how efficient we can be with the two.
So did I make my error in thinking that building and plan code enforcement is the same as what he's talking about code enforcement? In reality, it's two different things?
There are two different facets to the code enforcement. The code enforcement that they're talking about would be pertain to. The code enforcement that they're talking about would be pertaining to the actual code itself, like abandoned vehicles, tall grass.
I'd say I just called him today about tall grass.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that, yeah.
Building code enforcement is still not, that's not what they're going to be doing.
Okay, alright, because I was thinking that it was going to all be lumped into one, so thanks for the explanation.
And it's been, well, Jeremy, I really appreciate, I was looking over at him when you said that and Jeremy, thanks for coming up and helping. He was actually in on the meetings a year, over well, over a year ago when Dana, remember we were up there in the conference room and Dana sort of, we put him in a position to show us, could it work, what could we know more coming into this year and he has really helped. I will tell you that the, it's not perfect and like Jeremy said, it's, we're going to learn from it, but plan, police, HR, the two employees now that we were considering, Dana doing all this work and then he's decided to step down and retire, but there've been a lot of people involved in working through what would the best thing be? Efficiency, costs, serving the public, et cetera, and this was the route that we felt like would be the best moving forward into the rest of this year. And we can always reevaluate it, but Jeremy well said how you put that together. That's what I said.
Yeah, thank you.
Does your job description give the flexibility that perhaps we hire somebody with a degree in animal science, that that person could concentrate on that, but the other person has to know how to do it, sort of one person's gone? I mean, does it give flexibility for some specialization? I mean, we're not thinking one-third, one-third, one-third on scratch.
Denny, talk about the training that Dana and, Diane, it's unbelievable what we asked them to do.
And I wasn't aware of it until we made that move last year, but in order to be able to do animal code enforcement, they have to go through about a 40-hour training to get certified to do that. So there's training and they're going to have to be trained on the codes, right? They're going to have to understand what the city codes are for, you know, the abandoned vehicles and tall grass. They have to know what they're going to go out and look for. And that's all up to, you know, we have Captain Beam and Justin are communicating very well from upstairs and we're going to be able to get that training made, but the job description does give us flexibility where the job, the requirements of the job are going to be in all three facets, but if somebody has stronger in one area than the other, then absolutely Captain Beam will have that flexibility to be able to use them the way he sees fit.
So just to clarify, Justin's office will still take care of all new construction, compliance with building codes?
Correct.
This position will take care of violations of those codes down the road?
City code, yes.
Is that a good way to sum it up?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Your description was good.
Yeah, Jeremy, he knows what he's talking about.
As I look at it, the code enforcement that Dana has done in the past has been tall grass, automobiles, things like that.
Parking dogs.
Rowdy neighbors, chickens.
And parking, and parking too. We're asking him to back that up.
What some look at as code enforcement for new buildings and stuff, those are, that's more the inspectors, right? Those are, those are building inspectors.
Yes.
And I think that helps set that line for us.
Well, that's what I needed to hear.
Yeah.
And just so you know, well, you know, on the Wage Committee, we're looking at adding another building inspector because of the very thing that you brought up, so that we would have two instead of just one.
We're just overwhelmed.
Yeah.
We're just growing too fast.
It's a good problem to have.
Darn it.
Certainly is.
It is a good problem to have, but I also like the thoughtful way that this council is addressing that and with the help of those people that work with that, so that we make sure that we don't let down our standards, so that we continue to provide a good place to be and we don't, you know, outgrow that.
That's a great point and in Jeremy's comments, it was a spring a year ago. We said we're going to change our approach, we're going to learn from it and that's led us to this point and, you know, like they're saying and you guys are saying, we'll know more in about a year and if the parking continues, it's fluid, but if we go that direction, that could have a big impact also on what our needs are. But it, again, is all three, parking, animal control and code enforcement, two, not just one. That's the nice thing too, is two, you have backup. Somebody's gone, somebody's on another call and they may even, we may even be able to work at where we have an on-call 24/7. If there's a very serious event with animal control, one of them would agree to, I'll be on-call. So we've never had this before and two guys with the electronic, the equipment, the technology with the parking too, I think, you know, Dallas is going to be 20 hours freed up. Think about that for a minute. You talk, that's 20 hours of just paperwork he doesn't do anymore, that he's now going to be able to animal control and code enforcement. So there's a lot of things, but we'll know more in a year and revisit it and, you know, both departments, police, plan, well, really three, and Denny, HR have worked really well and I've tried to, I've been talking to you about it as it's evolved, but here we are. We think this is a good thing to do, so.
Well, I appreciate the explanation. I guess I was a little confused about...
I apologize for not making that clear.
Actually what was going down here, so I really appreciate the explanation.
And again, as we grow, we're going to be adding positions, so this, I'm sure this will not be the last time you guys see me standing here asking for a new position.
Any other questions? Concerns, comments?
I think we're moving in the right direction, I think is a good thing to do, therefore I will make a motion that we accept ordinance 2025-0601 on first reading.
A motion to approve on first reading from Mike. Jerry, there's a second. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules to vote a second time on ordinance 2025-0601. I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion on that motion?
I think it's worth doing.
I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. General recognition?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-0601 on second and final reading.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 2025-0601 on second reading. Is there a second to that motion? Thanks, Josh. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call the question on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you.
Yeah, Danny, thanks. Jeremy, thanks for your help. Good discussion. Appreciate it, you guys. Any other matters? Any questions or comments from anybody? Alright, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
That was short and sweet, I think we did.
Got a lot done?
Yeah.
120 million, that's just amazing. And not to say that that wouldn't have happened without the tax abatement, but...
Thanks for your explanation.